And I just would like to re-order the delegations, with Inspector McDonald, the RCP, first, and then Jimmy Dumas. So with that, a motion to adopt would be in order.
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Motion's carried. So inviting Inspector McDonald to come forward, if you want to pull the chair up to the table, or stand at the podium, whatever it's good for you.
Whatever works best, I'll have the table up to the chair. Present further, please. The table, one, pass it along. Let's go. Got more here. Stand right here.
Okay, sure.
As those amendments are way around, what you're looking at as you get to see, was a statistical comparison from 2011 versus 2012. And I'll start off with a little story. First of all, I think most of you know the work under Coast Concept, which is, there is no distinction in the office amongst Comox member versus a Courtney member versus a permission member. They all work together under one umbrella, serving in Comox Valley. Now, having said that, I'm giving you a sheet that just reflects things that have happened in the town of Comox itself. And the other story I'll share with you is, it's just a quick example. Just the other day, one of the fellows stopped a car. It was in Courtney. It had a residence of Cumberland in it, and stolen property from a grocery store in Comox. So, just kind of see the way it all works together, right? So, as you're looking at that sheet there, generally, green means good, red means bad, generally. But we'll get into a couple places where that may not quite fit the bill. So, the first category, I'm certainly not going to go through everything, it's clearly self-explanatory. In the first category, the sheet before you, there are persons crimes. And you will note an overall reduction in persons crimes year to year versus 2011, 2012. One thing I'll caution you about is when you are looking through these numbers later on, if you're a stats kind of person, just be aware of small numbers, right? Something, having one of something last year, and two of it this year equals 100% increase, but it's probably not something to be that excited about. The next category would be property crimes. And with the exception of theft of motor vehicles, and that one I'm looking into, I'm not sure why they dramatically increased, but again, it is a small number increase. A small number in terms of total, large in terms of percentage, small in terms of total. But generally reflects an overall difference in property crime as well. Other criminal code are all those things that don't fit into either persons crimes or property crimes. They essentially, you know, are things that are, you know, things like a, well, a few that are listed there, cause of disturbance, possession of a weapon itself, it's not a person's crime, it's not a stolen piece of property, so it fits into that as a category, that's it. And so we see a general increase in that as well. I will point out one thing to you, on the property crimes, if you look down about the middle of the page, give or take, just under that red line, theft of motor vehicle, it's theft from motor vehicles, '73 and 2011, and '34 and 2012. So, that's a large enough number that 53% reduction is, represents a real number, I think. And it is something that we focused on from a detachment-wide perspective last year, and this number reflected also in the city of Courtney, and in all the other jurisdictions in Comox Valley. The interesting part about that is, aside from the fact it's an excellent result, and it's certainly tied to our crime reduction initiatives, we got a phone call from Ottawa saying, "Why is this number so low? And are you doing things correctly?" And are you, so we had to justify to staff members, teachers, that this was a real number, it was a real reduction, we just quit recording these students. So, I thought that was, that's always a good sign when you have to explain that to people. Moving on, you see, it's all broken down there, drug enforcement, total CDSA numbers, things of that nature. As you move down the list to get into my next page of notes, the very bottom there, where it says, "Total other traffic," I don't know if you want to write these in or not, but my printer didn't like that conflict there. So, the first column there is 1050, 1,050. The second column is 768. And the third column is minus 27. So this is one of those times when we look at red versus green, green being good, red being bad. Written warnings issued, 210 versus 133, 37% reduction shows up as good. Is that good? Is that bad? Does it mean there's fewer offenses, or does it mean there's less folks on enforcement? I'm fairly confident the enforcement numbers haven't changed. As you'll see, if you look down a little further, there is an increase in similar enforcement issues. So, I'm hoping that shows up as a good thing, that's always a debate. So if you move to the next page, you move down poison. And another thing included in there underneath it all, I think, is common police activities. These are things that aren't as such crime, or even generally offenses related to any permission statute, there's common police activities, the vehicle, false alarm, call false alarms, missing persons, pre-located van vehicles, things that are animal calls to suspicious people, things that may or may not turn out to be something that's concerning. So, those numbers are included in there, although they don't fall under any particular statute. So if you look at the highlighted whole box, there are the stats, there's total calls for service, and you'll see a reduction in that, total in hundred differences, reduction in code, all that sort of stuff. Now, there is one thing I've included on here that weren't tracked earlier, and it's clearance rates. That'd be the very bottom box. So you'll see that there's been a general increase, with the exception of other criminal code clearance rates from one year to the next. And this fits with the overall pattern I've seen in the office, which is, a reduction in overall offenses, when our charging level is staying above the same. So, what that exactly means, I can't tell you yet. It means that we're laying above the same amount of charges on fewer overall occurrence. So, I'm still working on what that means. So a couple other things I'll just touch on briefly, from a detachment perspective. And I think if you wrote it a lot of days, or any of those other things, you saw the bicycles out there, and a huge proponent of bicycle patrols, they're very effective. And I think from a perspective of people just seeing them out there, they'd really like to see a bicycle. They're really effective. So that's something I'm working on, trying to incorporate more of next year. It's always a rob Peter, pay Paul company situation. Add more of one thing, and take away from somewhere else, and where can we do that most effectively? And, last but not least, a couple other things. Last year, we borrowed a boat, an ocean-going boat, that was out in the harbor, Chicago Bay, and things of that nature. We actually, I won't say stole it, because that would be incorrect, but we acquired her on a full-time basis for the upcoming year, so that's a good thing. And the other thing that we've borrowed, or kind of acquired on a full-time basis, is a motorcycle for traffic patrols. Those are things we can look forward to seeing in the later years, I guess. So, if you have any questions you have, that's my.
Questions, Counselor Ken.
Your stats all look, you know, everything looks like it's pretty much going down, with a few anomalies here. And you've given us a two-year view. If you gave us a five-year view, would it still consistently be looking in a good pattern? I think that's a bit unfair, because you're not the five-year view, but.
Yeah. And coincidentally, I did have a five-year view done up for me just recently, and you would see a similar pattern. 2008, when crime started, prior to that, it's tough to compare, because they're categorized differently, and that sort of thing. But from 2008, when crime, the direct shooting system, crime started, to now, you see this reduction.
Okay, so 2011 wasn't just a really bad crime year, and then 2012 got better.
Good. Counselor Ken.
Yes, Inspector McDonald, thank you for the report. And my question's about youth detail.
Yes.
And what it encompasses, or what it plans to encompass for the coming year, and if it is going to continue in full detail, what for Comox specifically?
That's a question that I'm going to have, it's difficult to answer, it's at the top of my head. It is continuing, and will continue into the coming year. Youth detail right now is a bit of a hybrid, because those are also the bike guys. And that just kind of goes hand in hand, because we tend to do a lot surrounding the schools and that sort of thing. Particularly for Comox, I can't tell you if there's anything that's going to happen here that doesn't happen elsewhere, but they do spend a lot of time with the schools, in the schools, and with the youth. So, greater detail, and that I'll have to get back to.
Thank you. And the second part of the question is, for under drugs, is there a specific drug that is a worry about coming into our community right now?
Coming into, has it been changing? No. It'll be, the typical drugs of choice are pretty much either marijuana, or cocaine. There are, of course, other drugs, here and there, everywhere, from, you know, we've seen in my time here, I've seen, you know, heroin, and crack, that, things of that nature, but to much smaller degrees than crack, cocaine, and marijuana, which are the two, and that seems to be pretty much a once-in-nation-wide trend, but those are the two front runners that are popular.
Recently, the federal government announced the change in the medical marijuana permitting process to go into more sort of commercial, industrial areas rather than residential. Is that something that you, I assume you see as a positive move, but is it something that you had to address specifically in the town of Comox? Not to give us addres, is it?
Right. I'll tell you this, the medical marijuana whole process is, there is just about not a person that we charge in traffic in the valley that does not have a medical marijuana. It's, yeah, I've never seen that. I guess it's quite, it's obviously quite common here, but I've never seen that prior to here, which isn't a condemnation of the community, it's just the people who figure that out. You know, medical marijuana licenses, you get to grow it, and apparently they're not that difficult to obtain, and they're not checked on by Health Canada. And Health Canada will tell you, they don't have the numbers to do it. So, I'm glad to see a change in that. I'm all for, you know, anything that people do with any laws and regulations that are set out, but that process, I don't think was awful or well, but definitely wasn't awful at least. So, glad to see the changes. We'll see what difference makes in the whole.
All right, thank you. I think that's all the questions. Thank you for coming and giving us that data and all the information.
My question.
All right, so our second delegation is Mr. Jimmy Dumas. So he's going to give us a presentation on the Northeast Comox Stormwater Management Plan Phase One report. Welcome, Jim. Now, we can move the podium if you wish, if you'd like it.
I'm just going to step you through the first phase of the Northeast Comox stormwater management plan, development of the plan. There's a little bit to go, but this is just the first phase, and I'll break on quickly. The first thing I want to share with you is the description of the study area within the official committee plan. We're going to look at four different maps, showing the study area, looking at land use, land holdings, open space, and the environment sheets from the OCP. In terms of land use, we have, the study area is this piece here, it's highlighted in this dash line. We have land use designations of laid industrial, residential, a little bit of public open space, institutional, and some of the 19 wing for Comox. So those are the land use designations that are during the OCP for this area. The land holding themselves, majority of the area is privately held. There is a small piece of 19 wing, RCA F Association, and three parcs of provincial crown land. In terms of open space, there's one small piece of designated open space within the study area. And the environmental aspects, a large piece of second growth forest, and some smaller areas, the riparian areas along the ditches that have been constructed in the north of Knight Road. So this is how it fits into Comox. It's probably the last remaining undeveloped, unorganized area within the town itself. So in terms of development, the objective of the development would be to fill the OCP, to take the land and develop it in a way that meets the OCP. In terms of what we're trying to do for the town, we're trying to manage risks, to make sure we don't increase any potential risks for the town. We're trying to manage the costs for the town, so we don't want increasing any of the costs involved. And we don't want to increase any level of risk for existing properties and people in the area. So in terms of the SMP process, the purpose is to identify, quantify risks and costs, and then identify how we're going to manage those costs and risks. Stage one, which is what we're just completing, is really, in my words, what do we have? It's an identification of what do we have. The next two stages, we go into what do we want? And stage three will be, how do we get there? And, so, stage one, in terms of what do we have? What was undertaken? It was a literature review of published documents, a compilation of existing data, completion of additional investigations and analyses, engineering analyses, and an extensive evaluation of existing drainage, both surface and subsurface drainage. That was what was completed in stage one. So, Phase One summary, just, what it really did was it established the safe conditions, both hydrology and hydrogeology. So that's what we were fairly defined and defined for the town. In terms of, ooh, color washes it. In terms of the study area, we have this large area, is the watershed boundary. Several interesting things is, there's an area upstream, uphill of the study area that will continue to drain down through. Most of that area is outside of town, so the town has no control over that. Within the town, there's some ALR. Below that, the Queen's Ditch runs up, and just through down at the bottom. So those are the pieces of the watershed. So this is a small part of the watershed, it's not the whole watershed, it's a small part.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You're doing a study to see how the development of this land is going to affect the Queen's Ditch, right? Or drainage downhill, whatever. And you come up with all your calculations, and we minimize the risk and do all this stuff. Well, if the land outside the town gets developed, and they don't do the same due diligence and everything that we're doing, is that not going to affect everything that happens downhill of them?
Yes.
Well, how do we protect ourselves for that?
You have to work with the other jurisdictions, but that's the only situation I have.
Because, I mean, we can do everything we can to mitigate the risks and the costs and everything else, but if they don't, we could be blamed for stuff happening downstream of us, that we had nothing to do with.
Well, exactly. That's why, that's one of the reasons we're taking on this study, is to clearly identify what it is that's happening, and what it is that we're doing to prevent any changes. So that if somebody were to come to the town and say, "If you're increasing flooding," we can say, "No, no, we're not doing it. In fact, you should look over there and ask somebody else about the problem." So we're managing the town risks.
Is that land presently inside the city of Courtney? The land that, no, it's not.
No, that's already.
Okay. Good, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's my pleasure. So, in terms of the Queen's Ditch, it was originally built to convey sewage from the base. What happens now is it drains a significant area from the uplands. And currently, it's, in the summer, it's used as an irrigation water supply, so it's been identified as an issue that people want to maintain. And there is a history of flooding along the ditch. And the problem we have is, is the study area is so small, anything we do in there, we're not going to improve the flooding, but we're not going to make it any worse. So, we've identified that water will come into, into the study area from uphill, we're going to convey it through, can't change that. And we've identified how much water we expect to come off. And we've taken a really pragmatic and hard look at this, so we've got some really good numbers. And I'm very satisfied with the numbers that have come up, and we're going to be maintaining those or making them a little bit smaller. The next steps in the process, Phase Two, I said it was, what do we want? And putting it in somebody else's words, it's post-development, unmitigated flow rates, volumes, and options to mitigate the impact. And really what we're saying is, ensure no national flooding, maintain summer irrigation supply, and enhance fish habitat. Phase Three will follow, and after that, when it's completed, and the objective there is to create some design standards that the town can use for construction within the town. So I'm hoping.
Any questions of, of Mr. Dumas at this time? Go ahead, Counselor Ken.
Yeah, at the last, I think the last time you guys were here, it was thought that you'd probably be able to get this whole study thing completed by about December. Is that still tracking reasonably well?
There was great intensity, I think we could get it done sooner than this happened. We've completed Phase One now. Phase Two, what is your schedule for Phase Two?
Well, it's all underway right now. We're hoping that within the next three to four weeks, we'll have a draft document together for staff to review, and shortly after that, it will be back to the same level of process meetings. We're hoping to conclude within four to six months. Four is our most aggressive schedule, and six, I think, is the realistic expectation we're involved.
Okay, and then, so I guess the next question would be to, I guess, is it Marvin or the engineers, as to, is that realistic to think that December would be, is that a realistic time? And are we still, we were going to be running the subdivision application concurrently, are we still, are we still doing that?
Still intent. I think that, it depends what December is. I mean, if December is for submission of subdivision application or approval, if we're looking at, the intent is, once we get into the tail end of Phase Two, beginning of Phase Three, it's a matter of coming up with specific exfiltration-type galleries, stormwater mechanisms. So that then allows, we'll have sufficient information for the applicants to start their subdivision applications, look at where, what areas, support housing, roads, open space, et cetera, like that. So if you're looking at, you know, six months for completion of it, so let's say you take six months of completion, then your subdivision application, subdivision applications hit in, let's say we get them in September, October, so getting a PLR out for about December, around that. Yeah, that's, that's within the, you're starting to get into the, on a schedule like that, unless there's something unforeseen, plus or minus, like three, three months. Probably plus three months if anything, but, so if you're looking and saying, is it, are we currently predicting that it should be feasible to have lots beginning to hit the market in the 2014 building cycle? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Perfect.
Yes, and so, the stage we're at now is, you've identified what the current situation looks like, how, what runoff is from this area.
Yes.
And then we will look at, how can we mimic that?
Yes.
And I guess, one of the things I've wondered about is, why don't we look at it as a rainwater management plan? When we talk about stormwater, people assume that we talk about the peak falls, whereas in fact, are we not managing for the year round, and looking at it as a?
Yes, in fact, if we're looking at, it really is a rainwater management plan, but the term stormwater is so embedded in everything, it's difficult, you're right, it'll throw away. It really is a rainwater management program, we're looking at all the small storms, and those two big ones occasionally, so we're looking at full spectrum.
All right, any further? Seeing nothing, no further questions, then thank you for your presentation, sir. All right, no minutes of meetings, we do have departmental reports. First of all, the fire department reports for the third and fourth floor, they're contained as well, for receipts.
Move receipt.
Second, receipt, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Relatively self-explanatory, the fire chief is here to answer any questions. He also mentioned to me and the CIO that they've recently made some further contributions into the Good Neighbor Fund, so if he wants to add those to his report verbally, that's great.
Sure, thank you for that. Last night, the director of the firefighters voted in $3,000 to the victims of the fire on Lazo Road, his donation, also $500 to the victim of the Kai May fall, his father has been traveling back to Portland, here in Victoria, on condition of travel, and $500 to Grau Search and Rescue, who's been very busy this last, her last winter, and also has lost a lynch, somebody stole that from her. This money comes out of our Good Neighbors Fund, which is a small portion of the revenues created from our training center behind the fire stations. And the firefighters will do this at least three or four times a year.
Great, thanks, Chief. Counselor Ken?
Yes, Gordon, I was on the town for this, but did they determine the reason for the fire on Lazo Road?
No, the best we can guess is, seems to be probably electrical, I'd say, or one of the two, but I don't know, we'll never get the final cause, I think the damage was pretty significant. And that family just made it more disparaging.
Counselor Fletcher?
Just on that, you mentioned in your report a lack of firefighters in the area. Was that in the town of Comox area? I'm not sure.
No, well, it is in the town of Comox boundary now, so there will be hydrants there. If you're actually broke, the nearest hydrant to that location was about a kilometer away, at the corner of Fort Smith and Madison.
So there's a plan for ice?
I would say so. That was a very self-explanatory.
It's not currently serviced by town water, right? This is the very last property on the edge of boundary, it's right at the corner of the town boundary, at the corner of Lazo and Lazo. And so far, the water lines that service the subdivisions to the north are internal, they don't run down Lazo Road.
And if I'm not mistaken, before they could develop that piece, there's a piece in between that comes in off of the Butchers Road subdivision down there, that would preclude them from actually developing that until the other guy goes first? Is that, am I correct with that?
Sorry.
The property that burnt is on the corner of Lazo and Lazo.
Okay.
And he owns, I don't know how many acres that is, but call it five, and there's a property in between his and the other subdivision. We would want it to move this way, rather than, so to get the fire hydrants in there, it's going to be, it's going to take the one guy to go before the other guy can go, is that correct?
According to this, there are longer tangling pieces.
Yeah. Well, I think it's because you don't want... Well, I think it's because you don't want anybody coming off of Lazo Road or something. I don't know what, I'm not sure.
He's a four-acre lot, and there's a four-acre lot beside him, to the Comox side.
The mains that will service this area are coming in off of Forrester. Forrester access to this particular lot. So for this lot to develop, and then for us to get our mains in this, the road's going to have to come in here with the main services.
I knew there was some rationale why it happened sooner.
Counselor Bryce?
And just another question on that, you mentioned about the reduced medical calls. And I just wondered, is there any financial impact? You got some sort of reimbursement for those calls?
We got some reimbursement for those calls.
Supply, just supply?
And even supply is difficult. The firefighters donate their time for the medical calls. What we're finding is if we don't, dispatching is slow to the fireside. And also, we now have the Atlas in the locks here for twenty or thirty percent of it. We've reduced the categories, as mentioned in the report. C is typically, serious or not too serious, and then the Ds, these are really serious. The patient is typically unconscious or severe gestating, things like that. The E category calls are probably for us.
So I noticed in this report, as we almost get an effort report, problems with recruiting retention. It seems to be ongoing, and I think I asked you about this before. Is there something we could be doing differently? I mean, I know it's a tough one.
It's a struggle throughout the nation, really. We're fortunate, it's not so much the recruitment side anymore. We're doing okay in recruitment, it's just the retention side is still a challenge. And most of that is based on the fact that there's not a lot of employment in our community. So we have young people that join the fire department, and then they find the work is typically outside. For example, we have ten of our volunteers working outside of Comox right now on a few kind of schedules. We'll have Berta, and Forte, who are back and forth, back and forth. It's a bit more management time, a bit of a challenge. Some days it amazes me we can keep it all together, other days it works very well. So no problem with, you know, we just took out nine people in November. The problem is it takes us, you know, probably your community people, where we want them, in some cases, in some country. It seems to be a purpose of interest right now, going after getting them in and trying to keep them.
I noticed the city of Courtney is, Fire Department's put it out in one of their transit buses.
Yep. Yeah, there's lots of neat ways to do that, social media and other things. Certainly, we're popular because of our training center and our high-level training.
Counselor Bryce?
Yeah, it's a great report. I kept having questions, and then there the answers were all there. And I was certainly reading about the training center, there was an article in the Times, and it's kind of down and practicing there. And one of the concerns I have, and you touched on it here, is the northeast woods and the awful, you know, effect of any fire in that area. So I noticed you cleaned out the fire pits and things like that. Are there any other things, visiting the schools?
We do some of that, we do have a youth program, those are things we talk about with the students we work with. So it's a huge issue, and it would take a lot of, a lot of resources to deal with it in a big way. Some of them need to deal with the forest management plans, which means we need to go in there and reduce the fuels. So clean up the brush, and I'm not sure that would be palatable in the community. And, you know, bigger where you didn't have small fires than this time here, to bring this up on the underbrush. So, again, that would be too palatable. So we just continue going the way we are, and we will have a certain fire there somewhere.
Are the roads usually in the same area?
No, no, there's so many trails, as you know, and there are so many different hydrant spots. It's a really good spot for the kids to go because, you know, they can go in there undetected. So education certainly is a key component to it, early detection. So, I mean, we're blessed in the fact that lots of people use that for us. So people are in there early in the mornings and identifying that there's smaller fires, something like that, and getting to the early triggers.
So is it usually the public that's fully taken?
Yeah, usually the dog walker. Usually they wait, they just reach for the spot, and that certainly helps.
And you had that peak block fire way down at the end?
Yeah, that was over a year ago now, I think, that that's, there's a significant portion of that park that's been there. And that causes a lot of grief, and it's back to the park. I think we spent three or four meetings there.
All right, any further questions for the Fire Chief? Seeing that, thank you for that report. Planning on building the Parkland Court from October to December 2012. Please. And they see all is in favor, and our planner is here. For any questions, again, thank you for the report and the update. Any questions for the planner? Not much to ask about. Permit volumes are relatively late across the valley right now. And we do have a number of applications, as you can see, for subdivision in the works, but a number of those are pending, that's in northeast, Comox. Emphasis, of course, continues to be elsewhere on infill technology. Just on that one at McDonald Road, that's shown as tending, I know that's not the northeast Comox Stormwater Management Plan, but can you tell me what issues in general are there for that one?
Same issues as northeast Comox. We're going into, that area drains into, in this case, industrial transportation engine along McDonald Road, and its back road travels west. For only about a block, and so well before the air pit. It crosses under back road and goes on private property. Where our understanding is there has been some, the property owner did have some detention ponds. I don't know if the property owners just ceased to maintain them or die, whatever. Apparently, a year ago, or a long ago, there was some erosion, something in the stream. DFO got interested at that time. So, we, we know quite a bit, it's like Queen's Ditch area in that we have an unknown capacity downstream. We have some potential problem, we don't know if that siltation was natural siltation, if it was because of the property owner, if it was because upstream development. So we now, from what we've learned in our east Comox, we've applied that to this property and asking them to, they're rerunning the studies, stormwater studies right now, using the same computer modeling, same runoff coefficients. We had expected that probably last week or this week. There's a little bit of conflict because their consultants identified that northeast Comox is using source, and they were on timeline to get the public meeting done. So I assume that we should be getting that information shortly.
And our Mr. Dumont is also looking at that as our consultant.
He's advising us, he advised us that we should apply the same parameters, so yes, it's been quite helpful.
Further for our pilot? Stephen, we'll move on to the next report, file enforcement, further report, October, December. Please. Received, then all in favor? Gary? I guess you showed us, your job is to answer any questions. So are there any questions for you, Sean?
Yeah, one general question. How, what do we do for parking enforcement in downtown? Are we just, does Bill do it, or we do it now?
Further for Sean? You thought you did good work? Pass that on to our bio. Rec Department report for September through December. Please. Received, then, all in favor? Our Recreation Director is here. Answering any questions, providing any further comments. I know he gave us some information, we discussed the budget a couple of weeks ago on fitness. That information is again, quite.
Well, it's just impressive, you know, five and a half planets around the earth, people that walk, right? Since we opened this, I just wonder, is there no way we can harness this?
Fuel our electric car? It's a little bit of a machine, you know, can't really bring the new machine in.
There are programs out in various equipment out where you can hook it into your electric grid, generating power. Probably you should have done that, it's a difficult, in fact, we did look at it at the time. However, the cost and the sort of infancy of the equipment at that time is not. But it's certainly come in the last year or so, and made significant strides. There's a company in Victoria that promotes, they're mortaring the bikes and hooking it to your electric grids. You'll see that coming once in a while. It's kind of renovate now to do that for a cost.
Yeah, the Hotel Grand Pacific doesn't put that in there. You'd have to be swept, couldn't you? Especially for me on the boat.
Jim, it'd be a healthy problem, I suppose we have it, but has there been any complaints from patrons about overcrowdedness in the new facilities? Because my understanding is there's people coming from locations that previously used to go in Courtney to our Comox rec center now.
We haven't had a lot of complaints. We do know there are times when, peak times, when people have said, gee, I can't get on the decent equipment I want right now. But they've been minimal. But I would say there are some of the evenings, and it's not the prime time you want to work out yet, as far as making sure everything's available the way you want it. Very minor delays of what you may need to get to, but it's not something that we need a lot of feedback. It seems to be working. It seems to be working, but I think we are at a point where, we're almost at the bottom of the worst state of the centers where you get to the point where it gets crowded, and then things die off, and then it gets crowded again, and things die off. So you sort of have this up and down cycle of use based on how many people are there. We haven't seen that yet. Maybe we need to be sure, it looks like January this year, maybe it was January last year. So, right now, based on the same number of days, we're up to three in the business. It's something that we need to roll. It is a concern.
Courtney, what Courtney opens, your industry will let you take something?
I think it will take a slight percentage of people that have come over from there who may go back in that direction. And that may help us to let go of the people that make that decision.
All right, again, keep up the work. All right, Public Burgess Apartments, fourth quarter capital and operations staff report. Please. Please. All in favor? We do have the engineer here, who provided this report showing where things are at. That was again, to the end of December last year. New work, some projects underway for 2015, which aren't necessarily practice. Yes.
I just have a couple of questions. One was, is there a larger pump size?
To work on that.
And it's very impressive that it's there. I just wondered, with the sanitary sewer line inspection, are you finding any problems?
We are, yeah, we do, we put a bit of camera in right now, and we're finding some couplings that let go, that water seepage is getting in, so we're doing those bigger repairs as we mine them. So, yeah, we are mining some of the next repairs.
Do we have any, a problem anymore of storm drains cutting into sewer line?
Yes, we have that as well, so we do the camera, and we'll see if there's a high flow going through the sanitary, and then we know obviously that there's some sort of storm that's actually going through. So we've caught a couple so far already this year, so it's just, yeah, ongoing maintenance thing that we do.
Any questions?
This is one, they call me Roman Station, where it indicates no operation required at this time. Is that for significant lengths of time, and that's $70?
The regional district has given analysis, have not given analysis on the upgrade. And this would have been, I don't know, if we would give the regional district for the upgrade, the analysis that indicated that this upgrade needed maybe another five years, so we're probably something that I think is removed from our capital plan as we move forward. Great, thank you.
Okay, you see, nothing further, thank you again. All right, Parks and Building Maintenance, fourth quarter report, please. All in favor? And our Parks Superintendent's here, any questions?
I just found a great, great report, and lots of things happening. I just wonder, with the completion of the Urban Forest Management Plan, what's the implementation plan? Let's go to the head.
The first phase of our implementation plan will be to direct staff and encourage staff to deliver the documents. We'll do that collectively, in the form of a workshop, we're on the present. And start at the staff level, and get people familiar with the guiding principles contained in that document, and the course, or chart, chart the course for the future. What we're going to be starting to do is identify some of the problem areas that have been picked up in terms of danger trees, and how they affect our interface with other ground. So we'll be looking at a long-range maintenance strategy coming up, developing that, including staff. I want to have them very hands-on with the interpretation of the document and then subsequent correction, and expediting our long-range plan. So that's Phase One, and then we'll look at a public education phase to follow that. And with that, we can, one thing that we've started already, and it's going to be happening in February, and the information that's going to be shared with the community, and this is coming from the Horticultural Society, is our pruning workshops that are going to be taking place on public land. So that's going to be unveiled over the, over the next few weeks. One of the, the first workshop will be on private property. And then we're going to look at follow-up workshops on the Filbert grounds, I've been working with over Kendrick on this. So just building upon, gaining momentum and strength in our public education. We think, we feel, both her and myself, that that's a real critical part of the Urban Forest Management Plan. And that we should aggressively share this information with the verge, people, private citizens alike, to get on board with the project. How will that work then with the golf course? Will you be working with the golf course in this case? We will have to be, we will have to be working with that as well. They're aware, do their own risk management inspections of what's going on there, so it'll be helping them steer that particular process.
I just recalled recently, there's been two new signs that went up at McDonald Wood. The horses using the park, and I've never seen a horse in the park, I was curious why.
Signs are based on complaints from our McDonald Wood Society members. And it's quite alarming to be walking by a public town and all of a sudden coming face to face with a horse. And by and large, there's not a lot of stables in Comox proper, so the bulk of the, the bulk of the riders that are coming in from the regional district side of the line, but it's clearly reflected in the courses and trial, and that's only designated trails are, are used for horse riding, which we don't have, we designate the horse-riding trails as Comox proper. Is it a big, big issue? I don't think so, based on complaints that we have, and a couple of here misses. We thought we decided accordingly, and saving both of those that are out there, and the horses, and also in particular the trails that we have. Occasionally, you'll see one in northeast woods, and also occasionally you'll see somebody on a dirt bike. Again, assuming those are, they're not bad, so.
All right, thank you for that. And then, as far as the last couple items here, we have a staff report on the annual test results for our water system, please. Please. Received, then, all in favor? CIO, that's just something we do every year, any suggestions?
Yes, we do. We're ongoing testing, but it is a requirement, and we make that public, and we have, please, I'm ready.
Notice there is a copy down at the front. All right, good, clean report, excellent. Somebody's watched the? Yes. Lots of numbers. That'll be real, or what's good? The leasing reports, and we had our inspector here, just to ask you, formally, those three reports? Who did three reports?
Thank you.
Favor? Questions here? Any further questions or comments you guys in those reports? Thank you. We have no further items for business, so much to do, if you have any more. Favor? Questions? Done. Anything?